Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regular City of White Lakes Council meeting via Zoom Monday, June 22, 2020 at 6:30. Becky, roll call, please.
Mayor Freeland.
Here.
Councillor Zins.
Here.
Segler.
Here.
Up.
Dan? You're muted.
Peterson.
No, I'm here.
Okay. Here.
Consent agenda, please.
Item three is approval of council meeting minutes of May 26. Item seven is to approve the following correspondence. Animal Control Officer, April and May reports. White Lakes Fire Department, May 6 and June 3 meeting minutes. St. Louis County, notification dated May 28 regarding no increase to solid waste disposal fees. St. Louis County, notification dated June 2 regarding calcium chloride dust control program. Minnesota State Demograph Center, 2019 population estimate is 1,00944 and household estimate is 881. St. Louis County, notification dated May 11 regarding proposed sale of state tax forfeited land. Minnesota Department of Health Plan Review Approval for the 2020 Street and Infrastructure Project. Data Minnesota Secretary of State Letter dated June 11 regarding opening of polling places for the 2020 election. White Lakes Library, May 19 Board Meeting Minutes and the White Lakes Light Report. And number 10 is approval of claims payroll and receipts.
How's the council? Anybody, everybody okay with the consent agenda? If so, a motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councillor Segler. Is there support?
I'll support the motion.
Support by Councillor Peterson. Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Freeland.
Yes.
Councillor Zins.
Yes.
Egler.
Yes.
Up.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'm going now to item number four, guest citizens. Tracy Lesnow, Leeds Road. I do not see her on.
You just entered, Mayor.
Okay.
I know. She's on.
Oh, there she is. Okay.
Hello.
We are up to you right now.
Okay, you just wanted to hear our concerns?
Yep.
Okay, so we are currently building a house on Leeds, lots that we purchased from the city. We've run into kind of a problem with the sewer line where we dug down, it like shattered. So right now, we're at the curb stop that enters onto the city road. We have gotten misinformation that some people say that it is our responsibility to pay for, if you had to dig across the road. We're just kind of trying to clear that up.
I went out there today and I did talk to the contractor out today.
Okay.
Jake, I think you can clear this up. The sanitary sewer is your responsibility to the main. And the water line is your responsibility to the shut off valve. That valve that's in your yard, the city is responsible for that line up to that valve. But the sanitary sewer service line is your responsibility.
Has that always been that way?
Yep.
Okay, because we've been told by like past employees that that is not how that's been conducted in the years past.
Anybody on, on the meeting tonight can verify any other, any other part of that? Anytime somebody's building in town, their responsibility is to get water and sewer run into their lot.
Correct, which we understood.
Yep.
Yep, which we understood to the road, but once it entered onto the city road. It was our understanding that then the city takes over. There was a problem with it from there on. Once we hit the curb stop is what we were told, because we completely understood that it was our responsibility from our property to the city property. Over the, that would be like off of our property now.
Right. I understand that, but the sewer, the city or the sewer line for your residents is your responsibility to the city main. Now, when I was out there today, your contractor did stop at the road right away or at the end of the road.
Yep.
Did he televise it? And from that point on, he said it's good? Is that true?
Should be okay. There's no guarantee, but yeah, as of right now, he can get in through, what was it? You know, like.
What's the lateral line? What it is, is the lateral line. It is asbestos concrete is what is in there right now. And I was talking to Joey Sop to see if he, because I know he's doing the street down the road. If he would be available to dig that out and go right to the main. Well, I said for that portion right there, it'd be roughly $13,000 to do that. So my question is, I think, I think Rachel needs an understanding too of this and she's supposed to be on the meeting. She said she'd be late. But a lot of people in town do not know this conception. My theory is, okay. Is if people of the past that have been in public utilities have been in there for years of telling us different concepts of how this works out, how different cities do it. So you're going to tell me a 60, 70 year old woman that lives in town on a fixed income. If her lateral line breaks in town, she's going to have to get a contractor to fix that, to come back and pave the road. I don't, I just don't foresee that happening. That's why we would need understanding. There's so many different aspects of people telling us this, people telling us that. My question is, so if that lateral line breaks that we stubbed into two years from now. So I'm going to have to hire, say, Joel and Sop to come in, dig that road up. And then stub my, my pipe into the main line, which almost that's what we should have done, because if it breaks, then it'd be on us. But I just, we just want clarification of how this is going to work out. I mean, because I know there's a lot of people and I wish, I sort of with John Sale was on this meeting too, because he's got two lots at the end. And after hearing all this stuff, he decided I'm not, he's not going to build anymore. He's just decided I'm done with this. So I think there's a lot of misconception that the line is there, but they don't know if it works. And like I said, it's not, we haven't talked to Joe Dick and Harry about this. This is people that were in public utilities possession, our, our, did public utility stuff for the city. Everybody said that once that underneath the city street like that is not the homeowner's responsibility. And so I've been just getting, you know, so many different answers. I don't know what the correct one is. So I'm just saying is, I don't think a lot of people in town know that this is it. And like I said, if I go to Side Lake or I go to a different town. It is just so different per town, because I, I, like I said, I don't know. I don't know. Do I dig the street up right now and stub right into the main and say, and be done with it or? That's, that's a question I have. We're. I mean, we're, we're paying a ton of money to build this house in White Lakes. We didn't have to. We didn't have to build here. And now I'm second guessing why we did.
Well, let's, we'll talk water. Water line is very clear. It's to the valve. Sewer line.
So where, where, where is this ordinance that, that we keep hearing about?
Where's the one you're talking about? Where, just because some ex employee said this, where, where are you coming from?
Where's the order, where's the ordinance that we can physically see? That says this is the homeowner's responsibility. Is there an ordinance in the books?
I guess we're going to have to find that. I don't know if Jake or you want.
So. I am on and according to an email reply I have back to you on April 14th. I did state that you would possibly need to dig a sewer line all the way to the main using a contractor. That would be your responsibility. We'll have to dig through and find.
There's an ordinance then, right?
We will look for it and, and I will get back to you on that.
Chris?
Yep.
A few years ago, well, actually my grandma's been gone for a while now and her water main broke or her sewer main broke. And the city did fix it.
I can't, I can't hear you, Tracy.
Oh, so years, years back, my grandma, who used to live on Kent, her sewer line collapsed. And the city came in and they, they fixed it for her to no cost of hers. So that's kind of where we're coming from, because we can remember that. I can remember it. Her toilet just stopped flushing. So it's just, it's so, we're just confused.
Oh, yeah, I have a question. So I thought I heard somebody say that the televising done from the curb stop to the main and it showed that the pipe was open.
Partially open.
I, I talked to the contractor today and he told me it looked just fine.
There is, how big is, I don't know how big the pipe is, but he said.
It's a four inch pipe.
Yeah.
It's concrete asbestos, which has a lifespan of 70 years. That's why I'm saying in two or three years, if that breaks or opens up, that's why I just want to know what the, the ordinances or what it says. Because we are, we are stubbed to it. That is correct. But I just, like Tracy said, there's so many different stories between this and that. It's like, I, I don't know what's correct.
Chris, may I, for a second?
Kenny, go ahead. Yeah, what's your Jenny?
Okay, so I, I've been here 23 going on 24 years now. So every house that I, I work for the Public Works. Every house that I've seen built in White Lakes in that time, the city did not make any connections to the sewer line for the homeowner. Out in, in my neighborhood, we have Beeven Cherry Grahams, Skeeter and Melissa Turk, Mark Whipler, Mark and Lisa Whipler. Those are the three newest houses out there. They were all taken care of by the homeowner. Their contractor dug and tied into our main. The entire Patriots Point Development was all tied in by each homeowner as they're still being built. Steve Shearing just tied in the most recent one out there. I was on the job site and watched them do it. However, we weren't the ones doing the job. So from what I can say is, you know, White Lakes, the city itself has never been responsible for tying in, making the connection and or paying for that. In, in before these lots went up for sale, I was up at City Hall. We had a discussion. And my opinion was asked, I had stated my opinion was that it's the homeowner's responsibility. However, I just wanted to make sure that a homeowner wasn't going and renting a machine on their own. Unlicensed, uninsured and unknowledgeable about doing anything and digging up a street ourselves. So my only recommendation was hiring somebody who was licensed bonded and knew what they were doing. Whether or not that information was passed on to the homeowner, I don't know, but.
Not before we actually purchased it. We weren't aware of that.
How, how is that made in that portion of the street? Is that? I mean, is that 65 years old also? That main, main line?
Yeah.
So my, my question is from there. What happens if you guys have to change the main line out? What happens then? You know what I'm saying?
We dig down and we repair any, any problem there.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
I, I, Becky just brought me ordinance 52.03, building sewers and connections. Number two, item E, all costs and expense incidents to the installation and connection of the building sewer shall be borne by the owner. The owner shall indemnify the city from any loss or damage that may directly or indirectly by occasion be the installation of the building sewer.
Does that specify whether or not that's on our property or the city's property though?
It specifically says the sewer line to your, to each lot is the responsibility of the owner.
Okay.
That's ordinance 52.03, two item E. I knew we had an ordinance on.
And that, this meeting would, would probably not have happened if we would have known that or had that information. It would have been. And that's all I needed to know what, what the ordinance was on that. So perfect.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that from anybody? Moving on to reports from staff. Recreation Golf Arena Supervisor Wade West.
Good evening. Golf course is up and running. It's in pretty good shape right now. We've actually been pretty busy this year. Part of that is because there's a lot of people off work right now and you end up being busier. So we could still use a little more rain, but otherwise everything's going pretty good.
How much range did you get yesterday, Wade, out there?
Exactly an inch.
Oh, really? Somebody in town told me three.
I had one inch in my rain gauge out there.
Okay, thank you.
I had nothing, I had nothing in my rain gauge at home, believe it or not. Never even rained.
I was on white face. I was on white face yesterday. We never got a drop.
Yep.
So.
That's about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Library Director Sue Sowers.
Hi, our summer reading program has been going well. We have just about 40 kids signed up and we're still taking signups if anybody's interested. The trailer that we did to advertise our summer reading program was featured in Minnesota Department of Education's monthly newsletter. So we're pretty excited to see that. We have had two drive-in bingos and the second one was triple attendance of the first one. So that seems to be popular. We're looking at doing other drive-in events. We ordered a inflatable movie screen that's we're applying for a grant for to try some drive-in movies. And with our license, we have there, we can show outdoor movies. Now with our license, there's almost 100 that we can choose from. So hopefully we'll be able to do that within the next month or two. We're also looking at maybe doing a drive-in family trivia night. Our curb side is going well, so we can get anything within the Arrowhead system. Mini-Tex is not doing delivery yet, but that will open up soon. So that will open up the rest of the state for any materials people are looking for. And then we received a grant for hotspots and we do have them all and they have been tested and they work really well. So those will be, also be available for checkout, probably within the next week or two. We're waiting for some cases and then we have to write up some policies, but we have seven of those and those will be available for checkout to anybody 18 and older for one week and then they can renew at one time. Three of them are what's called night, Netgear Nighthawks. They have a very strong reception capability. We took it down with us, down Highway 35 down to the cities and it worked the whole way down. We took it out to our cabin. It worked out at the cabin on the deck with several devices, iPads working off a bit around the lake. We had a full wifi signal. One was tested at the campground and so that is a good signal from it all weekend. So they should be, those should work really well for anybody in the Masabi East School District area will be able to borrow those. That's it.
Sue, did you hear anything else on the sign today?
Oh, yes, I did. Andy from Masabi sign called right after I talked to you. And Mike is coming over tomorrow to do something with the weather gauge and the time and getting that set up. And then he also has a box with some software that will download to a library computer and then set up our account. And then from there, from what I understand, we'll be able to input advertising and messages from any device, mobiley or from a desktop. So I will meet, I'm meeting with him tomorrow at noon to go over some training and then I'll be taking a webinar on Wednesday and then Michelle and Tanya also said they'd be back, backup and along with Betsy, I believe, said she'll be back up for inputting information.
Perfect. Public Utility Supervisor Kenny Snitzer.
All right. Well, as Sue was just talking about, the sign is up. Everything should be up and running. Once we get the software loaded for it, what she was alluding to, Mike is going to come over and install the Bluetooth or 4G antenna that's going to be on it. So they'll be able to control it from the like, our handheld device once that's on. We did a little bit of landscaping around it. We tore out the old flower bed. We were told at one time, there's going to be some granite planters going on a concrete slab in front of it. We decided to wait and let all the ground settle around it since we had done quite extensive digging there. So next spring, I would assume, well, once it's all settled and gone through one whole season to cycle, we'll get a slab in there and let the flower club work their magic, get planters up and, and do that. Road construction project, everybody's familiar with, that's back up and going to today. The block of Andover, they were waiting on some concrete structures that arrived late last week. So that's why it got back up and running again today. Few curveballs on the project. We're dealing with them as they come. We did some more extensive work that wasn't really planned down on the far end. The intersection of Andover and Westover, going into that new intersection, there was a little bit more work involved than I anticipated. There's one change order that I believe Emily will discuss tonight, you know, involving the water line going into the old apartment building down on that intersection. So other than that, I'm, I'm happy with the work that those guys are doing, you know. Luckily, you know, we're getting rain, but it's not hindering them from working on the days when they have the parts they need to, to do the job. So they're doing a good job. Happy with that. We've got a, a pretty big project going with the ball fields. We talked about the summer with the hiring of, of some part-time summer kids and one of our full-time guys who's an avid baseball softball player. He's kind of spearheading the project. Since there is no Little League and Men's League going on this summer. Our ball fields are vacant, which is a perfect time to get all the work done that we need to do. And, and that's going pretty well. Wade is also contributed by ordering us some supplies that we need and, and whatnot for the fields. We've installed clay around all the bases, pitchers mount, catcher's plate, whatever. So that, that should make the fields hold up long-term better in the future. Other than that, we're also doing, we're doing a pretty big new project at the cemetery. I have two summer hire students that are working with Tammy, Betsy, Tanya, the girls up at City Hall. Their new software system they have is capable of storing more information for the cemetery. So our kids are going around with an iPad we got from Sue at the library. Taking pictures, documenting all the information up at the cemetery, which will then be uploaded to the computers at City Hall, which will then help them answer questions when they get a call from say like a funeral home, Keith shot of us, somebody like that, and they have a question or and to relay it and we run up there. They'll have a lot more information at their fingertips right there at City Hall. So it's kind of a joint effort. I'm glad we have the summer staff to go out and get this info and get it back to them up at City Hall. So I think it'll be, it'll be great when it's done. Down the shop, we've been busy. Ambulances have been. I'm assuming they've been running quite a bit because we've been seeing a bit more of them than normal. We do have our oldest ambulance right now is at Lundgren's being diagnosed today. It, it went down last week. We thought we had it up and running. It still wasn't quite right. Call Lundgren's, they put us to the top of the priority list and got us in immediately Monday morning. As of closing time today, we hadn't turned a verdict on it. I'm hoping to hear first thing tomorrow, but if we may be looking at fuel system issue and or possibly a head gasket. I'm hoping for the best, but we'll, we'll find out more soon. That's about all I've got unless anyone has questions for me.
Okay. Hey Wade, just a quick question for Wade. What are you and Kylene going to do this winter when you don't have to walk through the snow to put up them letters? I was just curious.
Celebrate.
Oh, okay. Public Utility, Utility Service Jake Barrett.
All right. Water plant had an issue the other day. The water tower up by the diversion works lost its program. So we had to call Amtech and have them re-download that. I'll have a, I'll have an estimate for you guys on replacing that controller there. That might be the better option as this is happening once a year now. Once or twice. Other than that, water plant is doing good. Waste water plant's doing well. We're going through doing maintenance, just oil changes and stuff like that. Getting ready for construction to start down there. And then Lundgren's got back to us. The new utilities truck is in, so we're going to pick that up tomorrow. Okay, that's about all I got.
Okay. Ambulance Director Mel Homstead.
Hello. Yeah, as Kenny, Kenny stated, the ambulances are moving. We're down the rig. I think we're at 69 runs already this month. We're kind of in short staffed nights and weekends, so we're, we've got a couple applicants. We're going to start interviewing, get some hiring done. Also going to put an ad in the shopper for EMTs. Trying to fill that schedule. Been trying to shop for PPE and spend my grant monies. Just got off a week's vacation. I, I hear I missed one heck of a. Uh, just got off a week's vacation. I, I hear I missed one heck of a week. So I'm kind of thankful for that. I'm a little bit refreshed. I could probably use another week, but we'll, we'll, we'll just play it this way. Um, other than that, I don't think I have much.
Okay, Tri-City meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mel. Uh, Becky, City Clerk President, Becky Birch.
Nothing until the agenda.
Uh, City Attorney, Runfield.
Uh, just agenda items, uh, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Did I, did I miss somebody? Seems like I missed somebody. Okay, reports from city councillors, councillors' ends.
I have nothing tonight.
Councillor Segler.
Uh, just a couple of quick things. I, I know that, um, we're starting Babe Ruth, Senior Babe Ruth, and we have a Little League minors team that have started practicing, and I think they're gonna be starting to play games probably this week, late this week or early next week. So Kenny, hopefully, if they need to utilize the fields, uh, lighted field will be good to go.
Yeah, the, the lighted field is the one we're working on right now, and we're, we're trying to only do one field at a time. That way, in case things do start picking up, we don't have all four fields or three fields, uh, tied up at once. So I, I think we'll always have two fields that will be able to be utilized for it. Um, Mark Dirt was, was at the meeting, uh, when a bunch of us met over there, discussed what we wanted to do to the fields and the timeframe and how we were gonna do it. He has not reached out to me yet as far as needing a field. Uh, I know, cause my son personally is on the Babe Ruth team. It sounds like they're utilizing, uh, possibly the new high school field, depending on the construction situation over there. But, uh, Dolan Field is also available. Boabik Field is where they've been practicing up until now. Uh, Pine Grove is available. So Mark wasn't, Mark wasn't certain that, that what we're doing was gonna hinder it in any way.
Good, that's, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pop?
Uh, nothing other than agenda items.
Okay, Councillor Peterson.
Uh, just one thing, um, the East Range Childcare Coalition, they did, um, say that they are working with the city of Aurora on looking to build a new child fare, childcare facility in the Pine Grove Park area. So that's really good news. Um, the only, the other thing that I have that I thought it was supposed to be on the agenda, but it's not, is about a, a citywide garage sale, which I know we had talked about personal garage sales previously, but not really about a citywide one.
I thought I was under the impression that they're, they're private property, that citizens can have them if they want. And, I mean, the city usually doesn't run an ad on that, do they, Becky?
No, we do not. And I think at the last meeting, we thought that was up to the owners to make sure they use social distancing and that the organizers should promote that if a citywide is planned.
Okay. Chris, I guess I just wanted, um, to get clarification. The chamber usually runs the citywide, and there's about thirty or more households that participate. I guess we just wanted to make sure the city was okay with having that many in town on the same day before we tried to or, um, organize one for the fall.
Okay. Anybody have any issue with that? I, I think since it's on private property, I don't, I don't, I don't personally have an issue with it.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Sherry, um, I know sometimes a group, is it your group that uses the arena that's not open, that probably wouldn't be usable.
Right, just private homes.
Right.
Unless there's a change by then.
Right, unless, changes daily.
Okay. That all, Chris?
Yes.
Is that all? Okay, all right. We'll move on to old business. Item eight, COVID nineteen. Fisherman's Point Campground, uh, Dan.
Uh, yeah.
Any update on the campground?
Things I, I think things are going very well out there. I see Patty is on too. I'm sure she's gonna have some input. But, uh, I just did some, took a look at June and July. Uh, the first week in June, there were thirty-one sites that weren't rented. Uh, being in the field, there were only three in the primaries. Prime on the, on the lake type front that weren't rented. Second week, we had seventy-five percent. Field, uh, twenty-three sites that weren't rented, twelve in the field, three prime. To the nineteenth and twentieth, this last weekend, we were eighty-one percent, seventeen sites not used, nine in the field, one prime site. Next weekend, seventy-five percent. Twenty-three in the unused, twelve in the field, and none of the prime sites that are not rented. Fourth of July weekend, looks like we're eighty-eight percent. Uh, eleven openings, ten in the field. The second week in July, eighty percent, nineteen openings, six in the field, two prime sites. And then the last three weeks are about the same, seventy-one percent rented, uh, twenty-six, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine unrented, a majority in the field, so. It's going well with, with the way that, way we have it set up for reservations right now with just the Masabi School District. Uh, I know that Pat has said that she could rent, probably could fill the camps, campground every weekend if we loosened restrictions. Uh, I personally am not in favor of that. I would like to see things stay as is. I think, uh, we need to show that respect both to our hospital and our local medical EMTs and that are manning the ambulance. I think we've done a lot of good work in controlling and keeping the virus out of our area. And I, I think we should just hold Pat with what's going on and maybe look at it again at our next meeting the end of July if, if we can open things up more for August and September.
Patty, got any comment?
Um, yeah, we're, we're just gonna go along with it. If, if, um, I looked at our, our, for July, we only have about half of it rented. August, it's less than a quarter, and then September, we only have seven reservations. But it's, uh, you, you know, I, I've got a waiting list of a hundred people who have looked at the site, know they can't rent. So I talked to these people and they're, they're, um, I, I'm just saying, there's people out there that, and we are never gonna fill it with what we have.
Patty, my big issue is you, the, the showers are still closed, correct?
Correct. And I've talked to all these people, and showers is, are not an issue to them.
Okay.
Showers are, and we had one really nice thing. We had the health inspector in here today, and she said we are doing the most beautiful job here. She said it's the most beautiful campground. She goes and sees, and she gave us a hundred percent.
Good.
And she was happy about the showers being closed and, and the COVID plan. She looked at my COVID plan, and she said it was really good. And she went around and looked at, she could tell we were sanitizing bathrooms, and she was happy with, um, that. So whatever you, whatever you guys decide, that's what we'll go with.
Okay. So Dan, it's your, it's your recommendation to leave it the way it is for now?
That's, that's what I'd like to see. I mean, I'm just one person, but that's, that's my point of view. Or I'd like to hear from the other councillors as to what their view is on it. I mean, I'm not the dictator here, so, but it's just the way I would like it to stay.
Anybody, council?
I, I do kind of agree with Dan in a way, but also I think at one point, um, I think it was two, two weeks ago or whatever, someone lost the driver's license. It was on Facebook. The guy was from Thief River Falls. Are we stopping people right now from out of the area that are there anyways, visiting and whatever? I mean, I don't know what the right decision is, but I think there's people out there that aren't from our school district already. Um, I don't know. I mean, I do agree with Dan that we have been doing a great job. We not getting influx of people, but I'm sure there are people around, and if you take a ride into Aurora, I went to Dollar General last week. There was a car from Oklahoma, Georgia, uh, Tennessee, Kentucky. I mean, there's people all over, so I don't necessarily know that keeping it to just a school district is, is gonna really matter. You know, are there people making reservations for their family from the cities that come up here, you know, and putting it in mind, you know what I'm saying?
They are.
You know, that, so I don't necessarily know that we can control people being out there. I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is, but I'll go with the majority. I just, I'm not sure what the right answer is.
Chris, any update? I know you are out there.
Yeah, I mean, it seems pretty busy as it is, even though you're saying it's not full. It seems busy to me just with everybody wandering around all the time. It could be just a flow of traffic driving through also. Um, I'm fine with keeping it how we're doing it, just because, I mean, there's a reason that we are doing it this way to keep, even though people are still coming in, and they are gonna have their relatives call and get reservations for them. I mean, there's just no way of getting around that, but if we can help it as much as we can to limit the amount of people coming in, I mean, I feel we're doing our job doing that.
Okay. David?
I agree. I think, uh, we just stay the course that we're at right now. Who knows what, uh, recommendations will be in a couple of weeks? I think we'll hear more from the governor's, uh, task force on, on this, and maybe things can change then. I don't know. But I do agree with Dan, I think, uh, and and everybody else, uh, you know, we're doing our part as much as possible.
Becky, what's the, what's the COVID team's take on this subject?
Um, the last time we discussed it, I think, um, you know, Boabik's a little different than us because they're smaller. Um, I don't know that they were limiting their check-in, uh, like we are. Um, I can bring it up again on Wednesday if you'd like, but I know, um, as far as other activities and things, you know, we're also on the same page of keeping things safe and healthy and, you know, I think it's a good idea to continue the course. I, I also wonder if our, you know, do the managers allow someone to make a reservation for someone out of town or out of state? Um, you know, that seems to defeat our purpose a little bit if that's being allowed.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's being allowed. I think people are doing it without telling us. Wouldn't you think, Patty?
Yeah, that's, um, and I, I've just really heard through the grapevine and that it's being done. And, um, it, yeah, it's, it's definitely being done. I tell them I can only make reservations for the Masabi East School District, and that's all I make for.
Okay. Well, what I'm hearing right now is I think we'll just keep it the way it is until further notice, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, one, one more thing, um, we put the speed bumps in, in front of the park. And, um, the, the, the honey wagons are getting caught up on them. If we could just move them at the beginning of the park entrance like they were before, um, Al and I will even do it so we don't have to bother Kenny again with those. But they're, they're, they're just hard on boats, even though, though the boats crawl over them. They're complaining to me about the speed bumps. Um, I, I, I'd rather have them out than here at all. It doesn't slow them down. They're, they're still speeding.
Sounds like we need the police to sit out there for a day or two.
Yeah, so that, so we're still having the speeding problems, even with the bumps in, Patty?
Even with the bumps in, it kind of makes them mad, and then they just, it just.
They go over and give a gas.
Yeah, it's, it, it makes them mad.
Okay. Do whatever you feel you need to do. I'll talk to Chief Suler to maybe put a squad out there on a weekend and do some patrolling.
That would be awesome.
They would stop.
And they do patrol out here a lot. We see them out here a lot. They're, they're very visible, but when the, the, they, they, they go, they cruise.
Okay. All right, moving on to water carnival, and I would assume we're getting no change in the water carnival for right now.
No, I know. We just wanted to see if we could let, um, things on the list that we had sent in about a drive-in type movie and possibly the parade through town.
What's, uh, anybody got, I, I went over it. It looks fine with me. What's, what's the rest of the council feel?
I have no issues.
I think it sounds fine.
Dan?
Yeah, the list, that, that list looked, looked fine, Sherry. It looked, uh, like some good ideas, so be able to get some people out a little bit, but still be safe, so.
Okay, and we'll, when we plan out anything, we'll just make sure we run it by the COVID team to make sure, like for the movie, we're, you know, spacing people out enough and everything.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. And the only other thing on there with a question mark was a golf tournament? Are, is there any, what's the ruling on hosting golf tournaments? I know Dan still mentioned he wanted to do it on that Friday of water carnival if we could.
Wade?
Um, right now, you, you can have golf tournaments. They just don't want shotgun start golf tournaments because everybody's in the clubhouse at one time. So they, they do it by tee times. I know they had one in Virginia this weekend, but they do it, they do it with tee times, so you don't have everybody in the clubhouse at one time. So you can.
Okay.
And it could change by then too. That's a month away.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Oh, sounds good. Um, city buildings and shelters, uh, I don't see any reason to change that at this point unless somebody feels differently.
Um, Chris, I just wanted to let you know, I talked to Tim Suler after the last COVID team meeting last week, uh, asking him again, you know, what was discussed and what the, the team's feeling was on shelters. Um, he, he said that, you know, it was talked about a little bit, and he said, uh, his feeling was coming from the meeting anyway, that he didn't see a reason we couldn't open them up and just change the signs similar to what we had put at the playgrounds that, uh, these should, these shelters are, are not cleaned and sanitized, used at your own risk. Maybe, uh, a maximum number of people and please social distance or something if we were to take the caution tape down. Just wanted to let you know that conversation took place, but it's your guys' decision on that, so.
What's everybody feel?
At the COVID team meeting, we just don't have staff to do all the cleaning, so the way Kenny or Tim talked would probably be the only way we could do it. Um, we do have the picnic shelter, the beer garden area too, which is a lot bigger. Um, you know, we wouldn't just, we wouldn't be able to clean it as often as if people are gonna use it a ton.
Does the council okay with opening them?
I think I maybe have a problem with the beer shelter area because invite a larger group.
Anything, I would imagine.
No, I'm not muted. Hear me now?
I can hear you, Dan.
Okay, yeah, I, I think that some of the smaller buildings, like out at the point, would probably be fine. I think I would have a problem opening up the, the beer shelter down at, behind the, uh, the community building because that would invite a larger crowd, I think. But, uh, some of the smaller shelters, I think, would be fine with the signage as Kenny stated.
But he, but the thing with the big one is people could easily socially distance there too. You know, like the beer garden, you could use every other picnic table or I guess I'm looking for an all or none situation myself. I don't know.
Okay.
What's the rail think?
I think it'd be okay to use them and just, you know, like you guys said, just use them kind of at your own risk.
I would agree.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with them.
Okay. Okay, Kenny, you can open them up if you get the right signing, okay?
Will do.
All right, thank you. Um, men's softball, did I hear they are starting?
They're, oh, sorry. Also missed the beach on there, just so you go back to it.
Okay, yep. We'll, we'll go to the beach then right now. We're still not looking at lifeguards this year. The same thing, it's swim at your own risk, is that?
Prefer to see lifeguards, but that's just me. I've stated that before too, so.
Would we be able to get them at this point?
I believe Mark has twelve lifeguards working right now between the two beaches that are open. Um, and that's what he would have had if, if all three beaches are open. That's. Um, and that's what he would have had if, if all three beaches are open, that's what he has.
I'm, I'm good either way with or without lifeguards, but I'm wanting council, uh, decision on this.
I would just as soon see it not lifeguarded and swim at your own risk or have a. Parent or guardian with you if you come down there to the monitor and maintain the distancing rather than trying to have the lifeguards do it.
That's not necessarily what the lifeguards are doing. Uh, lifeguards are there in case something happens. They're not, they're not being told to enforce. Any social, that's not their job. They're there to watch the swimmers.
Well, I realize that's not their job, but you look at every beach that you see, uh, plastered on the TV, I. I drove to the Boabik one, there's no distancing going on on the beaches, it's.
I mean, I, I feel more, I would personally be more comfortable. If we have lifeguards there, if someone ends up drowning in our beach, I'd feel like crap. That's all, that's my take on it. I think for the minimal amount of money that it costs us, I think it's a good thing. That, and everyone's got their opinion, that's fine. I'm, I say we open them with lifeguards.
I'm okay with opening them since the other beaches are opening them. I mean, people are gonna go there anyway. Whether or not, I mean, there's people gonna be packed down there on the really hot days. Would we feel better having a lifeguard there? So that they can kind of watch over the kids and make sure no one's drowning? I guess that, I, since if the other beaches wouldn't have been open, I'd be fine. With not opening as well and swim at your own risk, but now that the other ones are, it's mostly just gonna be our residents going down there anyway, using it. Mostly the kids, so I think it's okay if we open it.
David?
Yeah, I agree. I think, um. You know, the people are gonna go there regardless. I would feel much better having a lifeguard down there.
Okay, Brian, you want to make that as a motion?
I'll make that motion to staff the lifeguards or staff the beach with lifeguards, uh, starting this weekend. Is that what? You want to look for a date?
Well, I, I think the issue there, maybe give Mark a call and see when he can, you know, that's my only issue is when can he get them there?
And, and I just would like to, uh, you know, I think, I think, uh. Counselor Segler make a very important point, just to interject something here, and that is. Let's just remember, and maybe this is something that could be, uh, passed on to, uh, Mr. Gert, and that is. And, and maybe he's already told the kids this, but it's very important, and that is, the lifeguards are there to watch the water. You know, the lifeguards are there to watch the swimmers and to watch the water and make sure that the water is safe and the swimmers are safe. It's really not their job to police what's actually happening on the beach area. Uh, and, and whether we had, whether we had the pandemic or not, it's really not their job to actually so much police what's going on on the beach. Uh, it's really their job to make sure kids are safe in the water and watching kids around the water. And having their attention focused on that, so as far as. Uh, if, if the beach is getting, if it's too busy or too packed, that would be really more of a matter for law enforcement. To just check on that occasionally and if. Law enforcement went down there on a particular ba- day and it was just, I mean, it was packed to the rafters and it was. Technically violating the governor's executive order on social distancing. Yeah, I mean, that would be something we would have the police enforce anyway and not so much follow the lifeguards. Does that make sense?
Can I get, can I get a second on that? Seconded by Counselor Peterson. Um, any other discussion?
I guess just how much time is Kenny gonna need to get the? The docs and stuff in out there?
Follow weather permitting, Dan, I think we could have it done in a day. Um, I'll, I'll, I just wrote it down now, if, if that is in fact the case. I'll touch base with Mark Gert tomorrow to find out whether he's got lifeguards. Uh, staffed and what kind of schedule when he wants to open it, and I'll be sure we're ready by the time he needs to. We'll have it ready in a day.
Yep, the other thing on, on the start date, Brian, we should probably get it in the shopper and it won't come out till Sunday, so.
That's fine.
You know, could even do July first or something, that'd give everybody a few days to get, if lifeguards are available. Give Kenny some time and get it into shoppers. How's that sound?
Works for me. Becky, you want to reach out to Mark or Kenny, you're gonna talk to him?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him, just like I say, to make sure that I can get everything ready before his planned start date, but. If it's gonna be towards this weekend or whatever, I'm sure we'll get it done.
Okay, and Becky, you'll get an ad in the shopper when we find out a start date? Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland.
Yes.
Counselor Zins.
Yes.
Eckler?
Yes. No.
Peterson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, city buildings and shelters, I think we, we approve them on men's softball. Is, didn't I see the governor's order that they could have that?
Yeah, games, sorry, games are allowed to start June tenth, so they're looking for the okay to start in July. As long, as long as we say it's okay.
I have no problem with that. It's pretty much local kid guy anyway, so.
Okay, can I get a? You are required by the governor's order, you do have to have a COVID nineteen preparedness plan or. I guess the league itself or whoever's sponsoring it should have a plan or at least something covering the fields. An actual preparedness plan, so it does say in the, I'm looking at the governor's executive order. That, you know, entities, uh. Uh, with organized adult sports must adhere to the requirements of the executive order, including development and implementation of a COVID nineteen preparedness plan. With applicable guidance for adult sports available on the Stay, Stay Safe Minnesota website, so apparently they have. On the Stay Minnesota website, they have a specific guidance on adult sports. And you can probably go right into that and, and pick from that to, uh, prepare your, uh. Your COVID nineteen preparedness plan. And I don't know if that's something, uh, Mark Gert has been working on as far as. Any starting of youth sports or adult sports, but basically for commencement of. Uh, whether it's youth sports and or adult sports or this COVID nineteen preparedness plan, so.
Brian, can you reach out to Mark and see if he has a plan? Maybe we could just use it for the men's softball?
Yep, I will do that.
I guess the one, one question I would have is, uh, on that too would be enforcement. I know. What Mitch read, I, I did some reading on that too, and part of that may be that, you know, they may have to be taking temperatures and. I know there's a limit of twenty-five people for the adults and the kid, the youth number was even smaller, so. I'm fine with it as long as we're gonna follow the guidelines and it doesn't become a free-for-all down there.
Like normally, there's not very many people at these games. I mean, it's, they're very small crowds.
I thought, no, we could have up to two hundred and fifty people in an outside gathering as of, uh, the twenty-fourth of June. And that, maybe I'm wrong, and I was kind of thinking that they'll never have that many people down at the games for softball game.
That's mainly for, uh, reals or wedding, uh, gatherings. You know, that there's a specific exception that'll always for a little bit of bigger crowds for those types of events, but. Uh, not for other general events, but I think anything you pass in this regard. Uh, should just as part of the motions or reflects it in the minutes that. You know, you can allow adult league, uh, adult softball league to commence, but. And just we'll could put right in the minutes that it condition on compliance with the executive order and, you know. Implementation of necessary preparedness plan.
Okay, Chris, is Bucky still in charge of that?
He's not, it's Matt Zimmer.
Okay. Talk to him about it, um, just let him know, kind of look up what the governor's. Requirements are and to have, give us some sort of a plan before they can start.
Okay.
Okay, so there was a motion on the floor. Chris, did you make that motion to allow softball?
Um, I didn't, but I'll make that motion to allow men's softball.
Okay, and support?
I'll support, everything Mitch said, um, as far as getting the plan in place.
The plan.
Okay, so support by Counselor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eckler?
Yes. Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, pickleball, I would imagine that's not gonna go right now because, uh, the buildings are still closed. So there, you know, nothing going on there. Um, I, I put this on the utility bill, shut off late fees. Um, we're getting quite a few of them.
Go back to pickleball, would the council have a problem? I, the tennis courts aren't up down at the, at the tennis court. If the pickleball people wanted to, could they go set their nets up and play there?
I can't hear you, Brian, I don't know if it's.
Well, I said, um, would there be an issue if we allowed the pickleballers to use the tennis courts? Set their nets up at the tennis court since there are no tennis court or tennis nets up yet? Can you not hear me?
Yeah, I heard that. No, it's, they want to use the tennis courts.
I'm just saying, could they if they wanted to?
Yeah, is, isn't, uh, are they using the skateboard park?
Skateboard park is being utilized.
Yeah, I, I have no issue. I mean, you're talking, you've got a half a dozen people down there. They wanted to set it up in there.
Yeah, okay, and I know the nets we have are at, uh, at the arena, I don't know. How we would work that for getting access to those nets though, so.
Well, Wade, Wade could get them. Are they, Wade, do you think those nets would be okay outside?
Yeah, they're fine because they're not left, they're not left outside. They, they take them down and would take them home with them when they're done. So it's no, that'd be fine.
Okay. I'll reach out to the people that play pickleball if they want to start playing, and maybe they could utilize those courts a little bit.
Okay, sounds good. Um, the reason I put utility bills shut off and late fees on there is. I think we should move to the point where it needs to be COVID related. If, if people can prove they can't pay their bills. Um, because, because of COVID, because they lost their job or they're unemployed, that's one thing. What I'm seeing is a lot of people that are on there all the time anyway, they're on there again. And, uh, I think it's allowing a bunch of people not to pay their bills. Uh, and I don't think that's got anything to do with COVID, so what's the council feel on that?
We, I agree. I think that if, um, let's say can prove that it's a COVID related. Affecting their business or they're, you know, laid off from their jobs because of that.
Frankly, I don't think we want to get into that as a city. You're gonna be getting into having the people submit. All sorts of people submit, uh, medical data or private data on themselves, then we have to become the custodians of that data. There's HIPAA issues. Uh, if you're gonna require somebody to submit proof of, of why, uh, of, of why they're late on their utility bills or get into that. You're, you'd be better off just, just start going, go back to just start imposing late fees and shut offs. The law, the law at this point does not prohibit you from doing that, so none of the COVID-related laws. Are prohibiting you from imposing late fees or penalties or pursuing, uh, shut offs. No, there are some laws out there that are preventing mortgage foreclosure, closures or evictions. But there really isn't anything that prohibits a utility from continuing to be able to. Um, uh, impose, uh, late fee penalties. Or impose utility shut offs and frankly, just be better to go back to your old system rather than trying to have somebody manage well. This is sufficient medical excuse related to COVID to not pay your bill on time and. And then, then we're in possession of that data and it does create complications. Under the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act and HIPAA when we get into that kind of stuff.
Okay, okay, what's the council feel?
So I'm, I'm trying to remember, we, we just basically did this as a favor for. For people to, to not assess a, a late fee or a shut off fee because of the COVID, so maybe. We could put an ad in the shopper back effective August first, uh, we're gonna go back to the old policy. People are. Gonna need to be current on their bills and we will start assessing late fees as such, or.
I like that idea, Dan. Give them a month, give them a notice. So, so we just don't do it tomorrow, we give them, that gives them five weeks to get caught up. Okay, I, I need a motion, I'd like a motion on that to rescind that late fee thing to August first then.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Counselor Pop making a motion that effective August first, the late fees will be reimposed on utility bills. Support?
So I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Zins. Hall in favor? Oh, excuse me, roll call.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eckler?
Yes. Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, um. Hey, hey, okay, I got that. Uh, we're down to city preparedness plan. Um, Becky has this entered under eight A. This is the COVID nineteen preparedness plan, looks really good. And Becky, you said we need to make a motion and approve this.
Guidelines, we have to have approval by council by June twenty-ninth. Um, I had attorney, uh, take a look at it today and we did. Um, tweak one of the paragraphs regarding the federal family first act. Regarding leave policy, we added a sentence in there. Um, I got it to all of you. I don't know if you had a chance to even look at that email. Um, and this is also remembering that, you know, city hall is not open yet, city buildings aren't open yet. But I think we've got a good start on a plan and if, if any big changes would come up, I could, I could come back to you with it again.
You may got any questions on the, on the plan?
I guess just, uh, just a comment on the plan. I think the plan is great. I think, I just hope that everybody in reading that plan realizes that basically anytime any of us enter city hall. We need a face covering on according to that plan.
Okay. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the plan? Motion by Mayor Breland, support?
I'll support.
Support by Counselor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Eckler?
Yes. Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. I added one more item to the COVID nineteen, the Northern Lights Music Festival. Um, I've been in a lot of discussion, uh, Mayor Gregor from Aurora is on here, or he was, there he is, Doug. Um, they are moving forward. I'm, I'm fairly disappointed in the school. Um, for not bringing this to the COVID response team. I think the East Range has done a fantastic job bringing everything through the COVID nineteen team. And, uh, we've been following their guidelines. It's, it's made up of somebody from Aurora Hoyt Lakes, Boabik, Tona White. The school and the hospital and for them to move forward on this, had a long talk with, with, uh, Veda Zupantik tonight. Um, she assured me that, uh, what they're doing meets all the guidelines. Um, what I said was, I, I don't, I have no doubt that they do. I said, but our own students aren't allowed to go in that building at this point, but we're gonna allow. Students from all over the country to come in there and, and take private music lessons, so. Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm looking for comment from the rest of the council. I'm not happy with it and I don't think they should have it, so.
I a hundred percent agree with you, Chris. I think it's, uh, kind of hypocritical where. We're not allowing people from outside the area to camp in our campgrounds. We're not having water carnivals. Fourth of July is our closed, our shutdown, um. It just seems awful hypocritical to me to say that we'll allow this, but we can't do the other things, so. I think that, uh, I think their COVID team meets on Wednesday. And I think from the ci- we should as a city recommend that they not, are not allowed to use the school. I mean, that's. I don't think it's right at all, so.
Anybody else?
Yes, I completely agree that they shouldn't be using it. We've worked so hard to get where we are. And we, we're really keeping our communities safe this way, and now we're just gonna be opening it up. And there are practices going on at the school now, and so they're, the students that are there could be subject to anything else that's coming in the building. So, yeah, I think I agree with Brian. It's completely, I think it's wrong that we would open it to, to this. But then we haven't been allowing anything else, like the kids couldn't have a regular graduation. So, yep, that's my answer there.
Okay, Doug, I'm gonna go to Mayor Doug Gregor. Doug, your comments?
Uh, I was just intending to listen in on the discussion and I.
Uh, I was just intending to listen in on the discussion. I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, I think the burdens on the Northern Lights Music Festival to somehow present a compelling case that they in fact can do this in a safe manner that's respectful of all that the communities have done and all the sacrifices, all the citizens have made. Um, you know, it, it's, uh, as your counselors have said, it's, it's way out of line with uh, the other community activities and, uh, uh, sacrifices and, uh, uh, I, it's, it, the timing is unfortunate. I think, uh, it's, there's certainly something wrong with why this wasn't brought to the COVID committee before. And, uh, I don't know what could be done if in fact, uh, people are already arriving for the festival. But, uh, again, I think the, uh, uh, burden is on the Northern Lights Music Festival to, uh, explain their actions and intended actions to the communities and, uh, the fact that we've cut back on so many, uh, mogul activities and, um, uh, changed the entire character of the summer experience for all of our residents. And, uh, I, I just hope there's something more forthcoming than the information we've had so far.
Anybody else?
I would basically agree wholeheartedly with everything that's been stated up to this point. And, you know, it's, it's not in our control. It's, it's the school board or the school district that's going to make that decision whether they're going to allow it or not. But I would like as Hoyt Lakes Council to make the recommendation that it is not allowed.
Dan, who do you recommend we send that to? The school board?
I mean, uh, I, I would think the school board is going to need. They must have been bypassed on, on the whole subject from what I'm seeing. I haven't seen any, any verbiage stating that the school board approved it.
Nor have I, um, I just think that, that I know the COVID team meets and and they have a representative from the school that's on the COVID team. I think that Becky just needs to state that the city of Hoyt Lakes doesn't, uh, support utilizing school district buildings for this Northern Lights Music Festival. Um, we've made, like Doug said, we've made plenty of sacrifices for our communities and our, our kids and whatnot. Why are we going to cater to someone else's kids? That's just my take, so.
I guess there, there's a two, emergency meeting on Wednesday at two o'clock at the high school. The COVID team is going to be there. I think some school board members and Superintendent Allen. So I, I, I guess what I'm looking for tonight is a motion from this council uh, recommending that the Northern Lights Music Festival not be held this summer on the East Range.
I'll make that motion. Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Motion was made by Counselor Segler and was supported by Counselor Peterson. Uh, any other discussion? If not, roll call.
Mayor Breland.
Yes.
Councilor Zins.
Yes.
Degler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson. Yes.
Becky, can you make sure a copy of that goes to that meeting on Wednesday? Okay, thank you. And Doug, does that clarify our stance on this? You're muted, Doug. Doug, you're muted. Doug, you're muted.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, uh, sorry about not muting, are on muting. Uh, yeah, I think that, uh, at least clarified some of the waters, uh, there. The, uh, I think the school district is the appropriate object because I know the city has not made any facilities available for, you know, to promote the festival. And, um, I guess we can hope that the COVID committee gets some adequate, uh, responses and information when they meet on Wednesday, right? Yep.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Um, I just, I just want to make this perfectly clear. This has got nothing to do with the Northern Lights Music Festival. I think it's a wonderful festival. I just don't think, uh, for this year, it, it should move on. So. Okay, moving on. Blight, uh, eight B, Dan Pop, Counselor Pop.
Okay, uh, basically Blight, I would just like to, to thank Kenny and his crew for the wonderful job that they did on the curb cleanup that we had, uh, the second week of June there. I'd like to thank the citizens. I think, uh, it was responded to very well. I, I know I did a number of drive-throughs and, and people responded very well with getting, getting rid of a lot of, uh, unused unwanted material. And also just as a bit of, uh, the free East Masabi sanitation pickup, I think that was utilized a lot more, a lot better than it was last year. I contacted Al. They did, uh, two loads that tallied up to almost 22,000 pounds of material that was picked up. So, uh, did it take care of all the blight in town? Absolutely not. Uh, some of the residences that we were hoping and they were giving, given extra notice to make sure that they were aware of it, did not take advantage of it. Uh, Chief Suler and Sandy and myself are going to be working with, to try to set up some meetings with some of those residences to come up with a plan to try to get them in compliance. Uh, Sandy's been very, very busy with monitoring the, the grass situation. I think we have upwards of 20 different yards that, uh, were on the mow list or getting close to being cited to get put on that mow list. So she's kind of focusing on getting that in order right now. And then we're going to put the focus back. I know there's still many, many vehicles that are hidden in backyards and on license and stuff. So, uh, we're not going to quit. We're going to really continue to be relentless on improving and, uh, take it a day at a time. And, but I think we're making good progress and just thank you to the citizens that do take the pride in their yards and, uh, and the beauty of some of the yards in town. So, and there's very, very many of them.
Hey, Dan, I have a question. Um, did the owners of the Bull School, did their mo, own mowing?
No, the city crew is mowing. City crew is taking care of that.
I thought we were not going to do that this year.
Probably have, Dave, is I, I, I think the owners are walking away from it and for, and, and we were going to have Bo, Bo do it and bill them, but they're not going to pay it. So we, we've got a problem growing here and I got to get in with Chris Ishmaul to see if that, uh, plan that S E H drew up that I showed the council last month on those lots, if they're willing to do demo. We're going to, you know, but as far as I know, that, oh, we can send that outfit to bill. I'm going to be surprised if we get paid for it.
They're not paying the taxes. They certainly aren't going to pay.
Right.
They have the mow. So not only are, is our equipment being used on it, uh, we're not getting paid for it either. So.
Right, okay. I'll keep moving on that. I'll get.
Question, um, I was talking to a couple of citizens. It was today actually, and they brought up, would the city be opposed to doing like our, what we did to clean up here a couple of weeks ago, if we could do one in the spring and in the fall? Um, I said I'd bring it up and see what the rest of the council thought. They think it's a great idea. They got rid of a lot of stuff. But they said they're, they've got more. And so I thought maybe we could shoot around the idea of doing another like garbage pickup, not necessarily tires or batteries, but garbage one more time in the fall. I don't know. What does anybody else think about that?
I would be in favor of it. I think, uh, I will have to see what the, what the charges are for, for Masabi sanitation on this one. But, uh, I believe that I, we put an extra thousand dollars in the budget to, to cover that. So I think if there's dollars left from, from that that's in the budget and we can do it, we could see if Al would be here, whoever is going to be the owners of that sanitation service, I think would be a good idea. And, you know, I think the spring cleanup probably with the branches and everything else may, to have the city crew totally involved, but we could do a free garbage day again and, and see where that goes.
Okay.
Just sort of bring it up and see what everybody thought. So maybe we can wait and see what the bill was and see if you have any left over and we can address it then.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, moving on to item C, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Outdoor Recreation Grant. Dan?
All right. So that's the, uh, that's the grant that we put in for the restroom out at the, uh, campground. Unfortunately, our project was not selected. We've got the, everyone has the, the paperwork probably in front of them there, but they had received over $8 million in grant requests for an available $3 million funding. And our, our, uh, product not picked. Uh, and then I also went onto the website and printed off the projects that were picked. And there are many in there that are comparable to what we were doing. I think, uh, our project was with having the handicap accessible campsites. I don't see any of them that were approved because of that. So, and then I did some more digging. I, I contacted, uh, Moea, May Ning, I think is, May Ning Moea is her name. She's the representative or coordinator for the grant specialist coordinator for the, the whole parks and trail system. And asked her if, if they gave feedback and which she, she replied back and said, yes, she gave feedback. And I also asked her about applying for a second year. People a lot of times didn't get it the first time that they maybe got it the second time. So, and that's, that's the case in some of the cases. But kind of the most troubling thing that, that I got back in the feedback from her is it seems like the grant writer that was recommended to us let us down terribly. Uh, I asked her to give us some feedback as to maybe why we weren't selected. And trying to find the page here where it states. Okay, so the things that weren't included with the grant application, and this is really, really embarrassing is what it is. Uh, the map, building and playground plans, we're lacking details to determine accessibility. Need walkways to existing and proposed, proposed facilities, which I'm positive were in the drawings. And they did not have plans for the bath shower building, did not have play, play area items or trail plans or campground plans. So, I don't know if the application got sent in and they forgot to attach all the attachments of the drawings and what, but it, uh, it doesn't reflect very well on the person that helped us out with the grant. So about all I can report on that.
So do we want to, Dan, do we want to, uh, reapply then? Are you thinking?
Well, yeah, I guess the other thing that, and I would like to talk about is do we go ahead and bid the, the shower facility to see what, what the bids are going to come back at? And if we're going to have to go through the whole process, if we're going to wait till next year and, and reapply and do we then maybe look at, do we not have the most perfect bathroom facility planned for out there? I, I, I think it's, a lot of things could be cut from that building that would reduce the cost possibly. But until we get the, the bid back, maybe, maybe I'm wrong on that. Maybe we can put that building up for a hundred and $80,000 and we still have that money in the budget and we get that done and, and then go forward with, you know, another project that we could apply for a grant for in the future. I can do it either way. I mean, we can, we can wait till next year and, and re, re, resubmit bid with the current plans or look at the other options.
May I speak for one second? Uh, so just to give you guys a heads up, um, I had Becky dig up the folder from when the last bathroom shower building was built in 2015, opening in 2016. Um, to the best calculations we had, that existing shower building down there costs $246,000. That's what they had receipts for. Um, I've also come across other bills that were billed for stuff that was done after the fact. Um, sidewalks, uh, just a, a few things outside the building that weren't included in that, that were bid off or uh, billed off to other things as well, other areas. So I, I'm not going to say a number, but I bet it's, it's knocking on 280 to 300. The, the reality of what that building cost in 2015 dollars. Um, this year, the city budgeted 180. And just so you know, uh, between TKDA and the architect and the engineers, the bills that have been submitted so far, we have 160,000 left. So I don't know in 2020 dollars how far we're going to get with that. And unless the city chooses to do it in phases or something like that, where we see what we can get done with that amount of money for this year, or whether or not we're allowed to, uh, put that money away in, in a fund or savings, if you will, to save it and then budget more for next year. The unfortunate thing, I'm, I'm all for applying for the grant. Um, however, with the timelines, you know, you submit for it in March, you don't find out until June. And, and then if you're denied again, you're sitting in the same boat we're in this year where it's building season and you don't know. That also affects the problem we ran into this year with bidding it is we don't know whether or not you're bidding it with a PLA, a planned labor agreement. If there's DNR dollars involved, then there's, um, you know, you have, you have to go prevail in wages and that. That was the decision we made this year was that, the, the, and, and even if we move forward right now, if we go ahead and, and say we get bids on it, which we can, um, without a planned labor agreement. Um, since there isn't DNR money is involved, but let's say that number's more than what we have right now. And then next year we get a grant, just saying that's not going to be an accurate number again for next year. So.
But I, I, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm real nervous with the COVID. Uh, I'm not sure how much money we're going to be getting for the year. I, I personally don't have a lot of appetite for spending money right now. I personally would like us to put in for a grant again and, and see where we go with that, especially, uh, it doesn't look like we're going to have showers open this year anyway. So it's not like, you know, we're having something closed right now. So that's my opinion. You know, I don't know what everybody else is thinking.
I would agree with you, Chris. I think we will wait and try to get another grant and we'll wait and see what happens. I mean, and I agree, we don't know what we're going to get for money and we don't really want to spend a ton either. So.
Yeah. Does that sound good to everybody?
I think that's the best plan. Yep, to just, uh, put it on hold and, uh, hopefully we can get our ducks in a row for next year for the grant process.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, item D, City Hoyt Lakes Lots. Uh, Counselor Peterson and I met. Uh, we went through all of the lots, the maps that Tammy had put together for us, and we've kind of got a list here. Um, the highway 666 lots, we do have 24 lots for storage buildings that, uh, have been, um, laid out and, and surveyed. So we think we need to leave them, you know, if anybody wants to build, those should be where we build. There are two lots available at the recycle, um, area. The problem I have with those is they're not surveyed. So we'd have to bring in a surveyor to survey them out. Um, and there's been a gentleman asking for one and he's made an offer on it. Um, I don't think that's fair to the rest of the citizens that we just give it to somebody because they made an offer. I guess we could do a, I think they should be out on bid, but before anything happens, we got to spend some money and survey them. So if you're going in the recycle center just past the gate, there's room for two, two buildings or two lots on your left. And, uh, you know, I don't know what the appetite of the council is to spend more money to survey those two lots.
Well, if we're going to sell them, then, you know, we need to figure in that amount to have them surveyed. But I think they should be put out on bids.
Right, I agree.
Get anybody a chance to, uh, bid on it or purchase it. I don't think it's fair that one person approaches the city and says, I'll, I'll give you this much of these two lots and we accept it without even going out to the public and seeing what, if there's any other interest in it.
I think that was our purpose for having this meeting, Dave, was that we, any lots that we feel we need to sell, we need to make it open for the whole, the whole, all citizens to have the right to, to bid on them. So.
Right, yeah. Is there any idea how much it would cost to, to survey those two lots?
I, I don't know. I can find that out for the next meeting if the council wants to know. We can, we can check on a surveyor and, and, uh, and see what, what it would cost to have them, you know, officially surveyed. But Mayor, or, uh, excuse me, Attorney Brunfeld, wouldn't you think that's the fairest way? But Mayor, or, uh, excuse me, Attorney Brunfeld, wouldn't you think that's the fairest way to sell city lots? Would be a bid system so everybody has the opportunity?
Sure, absolutely, yeah, but then that way too, you, you do maximize the sale price as well.
Okay. Okay. So I'll, I'll try to get a price for the next council meeting on getting the survey done so the council can make a decision on that. Um, the next one of the lots behind Leeds, I've had several people that have bought on Leeds are interested in the lots behind them. And looking on the county land explorer, those are, those are, uh, already planted individually. So, um, I, I'm really not looking for a lot of movement tonight, I just think we need to talk about this. But, uh, those lots behind Leeds, if a person bought the front two, I do believe, you know, they, they should have first option on the ones behind them. Um, I'll come up next month with, uh, how many there are, try to come up with a fair value on them and, uh, move on from there if that's okay with everybody. And then, uh, there's, there's a, Chris and I found, it, there's like fifteen acres behind Viking Drive. It's kind of behind the start of Viking Drive and it's, it's city property, but it's completely landlocked. We have, we, we literally cannot get to a piece of property because there's private owners all the way around it. So it was just another one that Chris and I thought, you know, you, one of those items you might, uh, offer pieces of it to the owner that do own the homes, you know, to make their lots bigger, so. Um, I, I don't know what, i- if you guys have all looked at those different lots, so. And then the other one is, no, it's completely landlocked. I, I think it was one of those leftovers that, uh, we had, like I said, it's like fifteen acres, David, it's behind all those lots.
When the development corporation owned those lots?
Could be, could be, yeah. And then, um, behind Suffolk, two ten Suffolk, believe it or not, all of the houses on that long stretch of Suffolk own the lot behind them, except one, the city owns one. And I think it would be a cleanup situation for the city. We could offer that lot to the person in front of it, which is two ten Suffolk. Um, I think that would be a simple, simple fixer, then every lot behind them would be privately owned. If nobody has an issue with that, I could, I could have the, the girls to, uh, send them a letter to see if they're interested in that. Yeah, Becky, we'll send a letter to that, I'll, I'll talk to you about that, Becky, okay? Um, and then I think you got an email today, um, from Eric Forisman and myself about Minnesota Power Land. Uh, we've been looking for housing in town. Um, there's two lots out off of the, uh, the Laskin Road that, uh, we've been working on a shovel ready project, it's forty acres. A little piece of it's on the east side, but most of it's on the west side. So if you looked at that email, um, it was lot one and lot two was out there. Uh, and then the third, the third piece on there was that whole big property around behind the churches, behind the Catholic and Lutheran church, Minnesota Power is looking to sell that. And there's like, Kenny, I can't remember how many acres there, do you remember?
No, I don't remember an acreage, in fact, I didn't, I didn't see the number myself.
Yeah, and I, I don't remember, it's quite a bit, it's twenty or thirty acres. And they'd be willing to sell that to the city for thirty thousand dollars and we could make lots in it. I don't, like I said, I'm not looking for any decisions on this tonight, I just wanted to throw this by the council. I think if we are looking for a place for building homes in town, I, I think it's a nice spot up there and it's a, and it's a very good value, uh, for that piece of property right there. So maybe the council and staff, if, if you're driving around, you take a look at it and see what your thoughts are. I'll, we'll bring it back up on, in, on the July meeting. And then they're also trying to get rid of another lot, um, behind Coventry and Leeds. Um, there's Minnesota Power owns a little piece there. What I'm recommending on this one, that we send a letter to all of the lot owners in the front to see if, if they're interested in purchasing that. Um, some of you that know, like behind Benji Johnson and Gene Mackey, um, all the way down to the corner to Leeds, there's a Minnesota Power property lot factor that they're looking at, at selling. So it's something homeowners, uh, I think if we just send a letter to each one of them homeowners, see if they're, if they're interested in it, I think we can move forward. And they don't even have a price on that piece yet, so. But, uh, those are the, those are the lots we kind of came up with. Chris, any, anything else, Chris?
Um, no, I didn't have anything else to add.
Okay. So I'm just gonna, this is just for information tonight and, and we'll come up with some more information. Anybody's got any questions on any of them? Okay, moving to item E. Um, Becky wants to schedule, we, I know we talked about it in audit review with Tom Kelly and Walker, Guru and Hanny. Is there a date on that at all?
Uh, he didn't provide any dates, it's just what, what works for council. I, you know, if, if you wanted to do it, um, you know, maybe before our next council meeting? If that worked for everybody?
That would be good with me.
That would be an idea, that would be, um, July twenty-seventh, maybe at like five o'clock.
I'll be on vacation that week, but I, it's fine.
But it can be any other day too, and, um, that's a meeting where we could do it in person, I think. Um, I think we could social distance and get that done and, you know, I think it'd be better in person, probably.
Okay. Everybody else okay with trying to do it at five o'clock before the next meeting?
I know that will not work for me. If, if things work out, if McCarthy Beach opens up for camping, we'd probably be, July is, I mean, we're gonna be around the first five, six days and then hopefully not much after that, so.
Okay.
Think it's important that we try to get this meeting in before we start talking about budgets for twenty twenty-one, so.
Well, I have the first budget meeting scheduled for August tenth. So if there's some other dates that work better for you, I'll, maybe you could email those to me and I'll just get it set up. Um, we'll schedule it at the next council meeting.
Okay.
Early August, maybe then it's fresh in minds, uh, before the tenth.
Yeah, pretty much after August second, I'd be wide open for anything in there, I don't know how Brian is, but.
I'll be back August, let me check my calendar. See I come back? I'll be available anytime after the fourth, so starting the fifth of August, I'm available.
Sometime, sometime in there, Becky, try to line up a meeting.
Okay.
And, and since that was brought up, what's the council's feeling on the, on the July meeting? Are still on Zoom or you want to go live?
I'd like to do live.
Well, the only, the only question is if the city buildings are closed still, which we don't know, I don't think we could have a public meeting.
Okay.
That's just, I would, I wouldn't think we could anyways, because we may get too many people.
Right.
That's how I feel too, being we're closed.
Yeah, if we're closed, I would say we have to stay Zoom.
And then if you, do you want to schedule a meeting with Tom Kelly for August sixth?
Sixth?
Does that work for any of you at like five?
That would be.
That would be a council meeting, Mayor, so we'd need a motion on that.
The sixth does not work for me.
Oh, it doesn't?
Because the fifth works, although Dave has a Friday meeting.
Yeah, but if we did it early enough, if we did it at five, Dave, what time are you gonna be there, six?
Six.
What do you think an hour would be enough or not, Becky?
Oh, gosh, yeah. How about four, Brian, are you in town by four?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be around.
How about you, Chris?
Yeah, the fifth at four works for me. I'll take a motion to have a special council meeting with the, with the auditors on the fifth of August at four o'clock.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Segler, support?
I'll support.
Roll call, please.
That'll be pending, uh, Tom is available, I hope.
Availability, yep.
Well, he doesn't get a choice.
Um, and that in, in-person meeting, I mean, it is a council meeting and it is an open meeting, so maybe it might have to be via Zoom.
Yep, if, if. If City Hall is open, we would have it live, if it's not, it would be Zoom.
Uh, Mayor Freeland?
Yes.
Hunter Zins?
Yes.
Begler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, item F, City Hall project, did we get any local contractors, uh, get, say they would do it?
None, I did not get one quote from anyone. And so, I don't know, I'm wondering Kenny might have some input too, if, maybe do we wait and?
I, I spoke to Chris, uh, last week about this. We, we were waiting for the bids to actually close, but, but knowing that some of them were apprehensive of bidding because of the time of year, a lot of guys want outside projects this time of year. Um, maybe they would be more freed up in the fall, something like that. So we were waiting for the bids to close, I think now that they've closed, we didn't get any. We could reach back out to some of the same local contractors that, that were selected and just ask them if this same job was available in the fall or whatever. Uh, you know, would, would they be interested then? Um, I did reach out to, uh, the Town of White is doing a, a similar project and I found out the contractor, they were going through, um, an A and M construction out of Hibbing and they weren't even willing to drive over and look at it, they just said they're too busy. So I have a feeling that's what we might be up against if, with almost anybody we talk to. I- it's hard to believe that the construction is, is busy it is, as it is with the COVID going on, but that's what we're finding.
And, and my other thought was if we reached, you, you know, we could maybe reach out to somebody else, uh, who remembers who built this building?
City Hall was built by Lency in nineteen ninety-two.
So I'm just wondering with Lency, if we, if we could reach out to Lency and see what their thoughts were on it, since they built the building?
Yeah, I, I can, I, uh.
We've either got that.
Yeah, I, I can reach out to Lency, I have actually, uh, had contact with them regarding the, uh, water carnival shelter project that we were working on earlier this spring. So I could reach out to them and see if I can get them to come over and, and look at the City Hall project. Um, now that it's not out on bids, I guess I'm familiar with how we would move forward. If, if they came, looked and were interested, how do we go about that?
But I think Kenny, you could reach out to the other, uh, the other ones we gave them to and, and ask what their availability would be.
Okay.
Because I don't believe Lency's gonna be able to jump on.
I'm guessing not, but that, Lency, uh, Lency is a union, uh, shop, so they do also hire off the bench. So I mean, if they were willing to take it on, if they had a, a project manager, this or that, and there are available labors and carpenters, whatnot, uh, on the, uh, bench, they could, they could possibly take it on at any time.
Why don't you reach out to them and just see what their availability would, even look at the project?
I'll do that.
Okay. I know the meeting is going long and we still got a lot on the table here. Let's move to item G, twenty twenty structure infrastructure project, approve application payment one, Masabi Batuminus. Um, Emily, you on there?
Yep, I'm here.
So let's do this in order then, um, the application payment, Emily?
Um, yes, so, sorry, I'm just trying to pull it up here in front of me. Um, so actually before, you'd probably want to approve the change orders first.
Okay.
Because they are in, included on the pay application. So I'll just go through change order one, or I'm sorry, change order three.
Okay.
That is, um, a negative dollar amount change order for some items that were eliminated on the project due to some changes that were made.
So change order three is a reduction in the project of forty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty dollars?
Correct.
Okay. And can I get a motion to approve that?
Um, make a motion.
Motion by Councilor Zins, support?
I'll support it.
Support by Councilor Peterson, any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes.
Hunter Zins?
Yes.
Begler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries, well, that one was in the right direction, anyway, so. And then, uh, we need to approve, uh, change order number four for four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. What was that one, four?
That, that change order is for items that were, were needed to connect the water line for the abandoned apartment building. Um, we did not have a, a confirmed location on that water service and we also didn't have a confirmed size, it was a little larger than the, the services that we're putting in for the rest of the houses on Andover, so, so it did result in, in a little bit extra cost.
Okay, um, so I'll take a motion to approve change order number four.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Pop, support?
I'll support.
Support by Councilor Segler, any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes.
Hunter Zins?
Yes.
Begler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, so this is Masabi Batuminus's first, first application for payment, right, Emily?
Yep, that's correct.
So this is work up until, up till what day was it? Pay period six, twelve?
Um, it would have been, I'm sorry, my computer's running a little slow, it's not keeping up with my scrolling here. It would have been for period ending June twelfth, two thousand twenty.
I'll motion to approve the first payment to Masabi then.
Uh, Chris, I do have a couple of que, our question, Emily? This is the first large project that I've gone through as a counselor. I, how are overages can't handled? Because adding up on this first payment, there's over five thousand dollars worth of overages of what the original bid was, does, do you need special approval on that or how does that handle?
Um, it, it depends on the item, the larger overages we bring to you guys as change orders, there is, there can be expected to be some, some over and, and also underruns on the project as well. Um, the, the quantities that we put in are, are estimated, um, on the pay app until the work is done. And at that point, we, we measure everything, you know, so we estimate to the best of our ability and then we go through and confirm, so. So there, there is a tendency, you know, because construction's not really, um, not really an ideal situation. You can't get everything exactly on in your predictions. So we do tend to go over on some and under on others. Um, it's just the nature of the, the project, I guess.
Okay. All right, yeah, it looks like one of them was an underestimated, it looks like you ended up putting in an extra fifty feet of water line. And then the other big overage was on the poundage factor on some water main fittings, so, but.
And I, I, I can elaborate on those items a little bit too, and, and, um, Kenny and Jake can, can jump in anytime here. But we did end up going further into that Westover intersection. Um, it was something we weren't originally intending to do because the intersection had been redone. But, um, that was something that was authorized by city staff to do.
Okay. Dan, what hap, what, Dan, what happened there was, um, at the end of, on the east end of Andover, the intersection was just done, so we assumed the, that the water and sewer lines were stubbed out to the edge and they were not, the last superintendent did not change those lines. Uh, I, I met with staff and I did not believe it was in the city's best interest to leave thirty feet of old six-inch water main with brand new on each side and the same thing with sanitary sewer. So those things we run into on, when, and, uh, we assumed that, that, uh, it was replaced to the man.
Thank you.
So, okay. I need a motion to approve this, uh, first payment.
I'll make it.
Motion by, uh, Councilor Segler? Support?
I'll support that.
Support by Councilor Zins? Roll call, please.
Mayor Freeland?
Yes.
Hunter Zins?
Yes.
Begler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Motion carries. Emily, anything else?
Um, I I can give you a general uh, update on the project schedule as much as I know. Um, they did, they did start work on the storm sewer for Andover this week. Um, so they're they're working through that. It sounds like their plan is to move to Arlington once they're done with the storm sewer on Andover. And at that point, they'll complete the the sanitary sewer change order that was change order one that you guys already approved and they will do the storm sewer at the same time. Um, that's that's about all I know as far as their schedule. We've been asking them for an updated schedule and I think now that they have their structures in and delivered, we should be able to get a more definitive schedule from them on their work.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Emily? Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
New, we'll move on to new business. Uh, review the budget schedule for adjournment of meetings for uh, twenty twenty-one budget review. Monday, August tenth, Tuesday, August twenty-fifth and September eighth. Is that okay with everybody for now?
Looks good for me.
Okay, thank you, Wendy, Wendy. The city staff gotta have their stuff in.
You're going in and out, Chris.
I know that. I and I don't know why, but it's it it is. When is city supervisors need to have theirs in when?
Um, it what I'll do, it's on the bottom of the schedule. I'll be handing out budget packets Monday, July sixth.
Okay.
They're due back to me on the twentieth. And then I take time to input everything. I'll get a preliminary review for you on August seventh, and then I require the supervisors to attend at least one of those meetings.
Okay. Do you want a motion on this?
If we would.
Chris, I do one comment on that. I know from from going through the budget last year, and I know you've got on there that supervisors need to attend one of the meetings. We we were very frustrated at several of the meetings that a supervisor wasn't there to answer questions, so we maybe, some of the supervisors may need to be at both of the meetings or all three of them or whatever, so. And I'm sure they're they're more than willing to or aware of it, but.
Okay.
Of both the budget, I don't know what everybody else's feelings are for this upcoming budget cycle, but maybe try to in my opinion, we need to tell our supervisors, we want to keep our, try to keep capital only necessary things because we don't know where we're gonna be sitting, you know, uh, because of this COVID. Um, might be a year to kind of cut back on some spending if we can.
Okay. All right, so there's there was there a motion and a second on that?
Not yet.
I'll make the motion to approve the meeting schedule.
Motion by Counselor Segler, support?
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Chris, this will be your first budget hearing. You're gonna, this is exciting. This is really exciting stuff, so roll call, please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Segler?
Yes.
Zins?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
A motion carries. And uh, we'll go to nine B. This is something that doesn't happen very often. An engineer actually overbid a project. Uh, I I don't actually remember that ever happening before. But Brian, I'm okay with that. I I think that's pretty good, so. Uh, are you okay? Becky, are you here? Are you okay? Okay, so uh, uh, Brian, I'm gonna give it to you.
Well, thank you. Mine's, my internet's been a little in and out tonight too, so wave a hand or something if if I start breaking up, but uh, yeah, I'm still a little bit in shock at the numbers. If uh, if any of those are at the bid opening could tell, I was caught off guard with where the numbers were, which is which is good. So um, uh, the bid evaluation here has a few different things in it that I'll go through. So the bid range, uh, four bids were received. The low bid was around nine point nine million with the high bid at um, eleven point seven about. Um, I've talked to several of our engineers and and they all agree with me that if we bid that project a year ago, we we would not be surprised to see those numbers at twelve and thirteen million. Um, a year ago, uh, think it was a different bidding market, obviously with what's going on right now. Um, there's a lot of uncertainty. Um, and and there was, there was tons of interest in this project. I heard that from everybody I talked to. And uh, not only were the bids low, but they were close. When you look at the bottom two bids, about two hundred thousand dollars apart. Um, and so this bid just kind of hit at the right time and and um, you guys are one of the lucky ones that that catches a break for once. Um, so anyway, the uh, the low bid bidder was Gritter Construction um, from Buffalo, Minnesota. Uh, Gritter does lots of work in the water wastewater industry. Um, we've done several projects with them over the last few years and have a couple that are going on currently. Um, and so um, this is, this is what Gritter does exclusively is water wastewater. Um, and so they're a reputable reputable contractor when it comes to this type of work. Um, so again, the low bid was at about nine point nine million. Um, the uh, the process we're in now is finalizing the funding because you have a grant for the mercury and you also have an affordability break base grant. And so we need to submit those as bid costs to the uh, state, which we've started doing already. Um, and we'd expect that the overall project is gonna be about an eighty percent grant. We don't know that exact figure till we see where the affordability comes in. Um, but with engineering and the bids that would put the total project at around eleven point seven million in that range. Um, and so about probably nine point two million of that would be grant. Um, so the cities, you're you're around maybe two and a half million for this close to twelve million dollar project. Um, and again, those numbers may tweak a little bit here as we finalize things with the funding agency. Um, I'm just gonna pause there, see if there's any questions on the bids or the funding um, before I go further on this.
Ryan, I have a question for you. Now, when you when you're talking engineering, now all of the pre-design, the pre-engineering and and the and the design work, that's all can now be put towards this grant, correct?
Correct. So all the way back to the facility plan, which probably was twenty seventeen. Um, and then the design engineering costs, which you guys have been receiving invoices for, and you also had a loan through Minnesota Rural Water to finance that. All of those costs will get rolled into this loan and they are all grant eligible.
So I just want that, I want the council to be aware of that. Everything we spent on this up to this point, we're talking five, six, seven hundred thousand dollars. We will end up getting eighty percent of that back in grant, so.
Correct, yep. And then there's the construction engineering piece, which I discussed a little bit later here. That would also be be grant eligible, so. And there's other things in there too, you know, um, attorney related fees or financial advisor, uh, David Girone Associates, you know, their invoices, all of those things, anything that was related to this project. As long as you have the invoices for, could be submitted for reimbursement, so.
And I I think that's important because didn't we, what what did we have total eligible grant wise? Was it a little more than a nine point two, wasn't it?
It is a little bit more. Currently, under this year's um, fiscal plan, it would, you guys were listed at about nine point six. So um, there is some potential that there may be more grant available for you. Um, if there's things that you'd like to add to the project, that could also be eighty percent grant. Now, we don't know that for sure. We have to get through this funding and see how it plays out. Uh, but there is a possibility that we could maybe look, because of the great bids, at actually adding a little bit more to the project. And you'd be paying twenty cents on the dollar for all, for that type of work. Um, and then Mayor, the other thing we've discussed a little bit was I triple R B. And um, if there's any avenue for them to help with this project. Um, the one problem there is is if you use I triple R B, they, that may just take away from the grant from PFA. And so uh, we'd have to kind of talk about that more and see, see how that would work out, so. So there's still some things up in the air on the exact funding package. So we need to get all the bid information and updated financial information. I've already talked to Shannon Sweeney today over to the Public Facilities Authority. They will go through their evaluation and part of that evaluation is your uh, residential affordability and your expenses. And then they will come back and and kind of give us the whole package and then we'll know more details from there.
So the question I have, Ryan, what, let's say we get two hundred thousand dollars in change orders because we all know, we find out things when we're digging in the ground. Um, and if there's a little bit of grant money left over, do they cover eighty percent of change orders?
They should, yes. And so um, they, so you, in your loan with PFA, you have a five percent contingency, which is roughly five hundred thousand dollars to cover those type of expenses. Um, we do have some other kind of unit price allowance items in the bid where depending what we find, you know, you could be above or below budget on some of those. But in that loan, anything you spend out of that, as long as there's enough grant money there, they should continue to fund at that same percent clip. Um, and so I think, you know, the prudent thing to do would be to to get the ball rolling on construction, see where you are a year into the project and have we found anything we didn't expect or had any big change orders? And we can start thinking about what else could we utilize some of this money for um, as we see how the project's going.
Right. I I like to, I like the concept though, knowing we have about four hundred thousand dollars left in grant money to be a little cautious to see a lot of change orders. And in case we do have change orders, it might eat up some of that, but at least as a council, we'd know that any change orders would be eighty percent covered by the grant, so. Does that make sense?
And the other thing I'll point out here too is is, you know, with what happened with the legislature last week and no, you know, no bonding bill is passed yet. And we were expecting, we needed funds from a new bonding bill to get this project forward. And so with these low bids, what it allowed all, you know, this project to do is there's enough money in the bonding from last year. If this project would have came in higher, we would still be waiting for legislature to pass a bonding bill. And now we're fortunate enough that we don't need to wait for them and the funds are there. And so um, just, you know, couldn't be happier with how things turned out and um, just real excited and happy for the city um, the way these bids.
So you would like us to approve these bids and move forward tonight, correct?
Yeah, so um, we would recommend that you award to the contractor. I've already talked to them and um, they they want to get going, so. Um, they were asking for a pre-construction meeting right after the fourth of July and they'd probably be on site by the middle of the late July. Um, and so it's very possible these bids will actually expedite the entire schedule on this project too that things may wrap up well ahead of the um, required dates that we discussed with MPCA, so.
Okay. So I'm I'm looking for a motion night tonight to approve this and I'm sure we're gonna be talking about this for quite a while coming, so. Anybody want to make a motion to approve uh, this project?
Make the motion to give it to um, the Grider Construction for nine point eight, nine million.
That's a big number, Ryan.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, there's a motion by Counselor Segler. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Peterson. Roll call, please. Yes. Bedroom.
You're muted, Beck.
Sorry, Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Brian, we're good to go then, okay?
Um, so I I will, because you joked about the big number, I will remind you guys that, you know, a wastewater project is the single biggest project a city ever does. And so these are big numbers that you guys aren't used to seeing with street projects. And that's because these projects, you know, should only come around every twenty, twenty-five years. And so the numbers are all escalated because of this magnitude of the project. And for your residents too, when you're talking to them, you know, they're gonna see this big number. Uh, it is eighty percent grant, but this is the single largest project a city does is a major overhaul to the wastewater treatment plant. So I just want to remind you guys of that and when you're talking to constituents, you know, that this is, this is kind of a one of a kind type of project, so. Um, anyway, and not to but labor things anymore here. So the other part of my letter to you guys was uh, approval on construction engineering services in in the letter. So I li- I've laid out a scope of what we do. Um, basically, starting now, we're working to finalize the funding and we'll continue to work through that. Because of the grants on this project, there are um, wage monitoring and other requirements that we do for the city throughout the project. Uh, there's also American Iron and Steel on this project, so all steel components that are in the building are required to be made uh, produced in America. So that's American Iron and Steel Act. Um, and so we'll be monitoring for those type of things in addition to our normal construction type um, services. And so I won't go through all these, um, but there's the construction services and then at the end of the project, because it's funded through uh, the PFA, there is a a complete O and M manual that needs to be done and submitted and there's uh, paperwork to submit through MPCA. So there's some other requirements there that will be done um, through MPCA. Um, we are anticipating probably about eighteen month construction schedule and depending how much work they get done this summer, um, we'll kind of have to see how that goes. I was not really expecting that they would be starting this soon. I was really kind of thinking it would start next summer. So um, we're looking at probably eighteen months construction, which means the entire project span is probably a two-year project, so this is gonna be going on a while. Um, and really by the time we close everything out, we are typically involved in these, you know, two and a half, three years if it's a two-year construction project. So it is a long project. There's a lot of things to get through. Um, for that, we've we've budgeted approximately fifty-six hundred staff hours uh, over the course of the entire construction project. I know you guys typically see me, but there's probably twenty-five to thirty different individuals that will work on this project from now through the end of construction. So there's a lot of staff time that goes into it. Um, so our proposed hourly not to exceed fee is seven hundred and fifty-five thousand and that would be for the complete duration of construction. And that is uh, based hourly just on the hours actually spent. So I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding our scope of work, uh, anything on that uh, engineering services for construction.
Anybody have any questions for Brian? If not, I need a motion to approve the uh, pre-construction and construction services and pro- project closeout for a proposed fee not to exceed seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We awarded the project, now we have to have somebody oversee it, so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counselor Zins. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by Counselor Pop. Roll call, please.
Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. There you go, Brian. Anything else?
Um, no, not on this item, so we'll uh, we'll be in touch with contracts and look forward to get going.
Okay, the next item, I have not had time to look at this proposed services for consulting engineering, Brian. Um, I'm gonna wanna table this for tonight.
Yep, no, no problem.
Time to look at it, okay?
Yep, no problem, so.
Okay. And we'll move on to uh,
Yeah, the motion.
City of White Lakes Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one eight.
We need a motion to table that. I'll make the motion.
Motion by Counselor Segler to table, support? All support. Roll call.
Who supported? Did you get that?
I think Chris supported.
Eric did. Counselor Pop?
Yes.
Right, Brian made the motion and I supported. I know the computers aren't working the greatest right now.
Just wanted to get it for the minutes. Uh, roll call, Mayor Breland?
Yes.
Counselor Zins?
Yes.
Segler?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item, item nine D, uh, City of White Lakes Resolution twenty twenty dash zero one eight, resolution sponsorship for the Moose Trail.
This is, uh, we need a yearly resolution for the Moose Trail. It's a trail we've been sponsoring for many, many years for the. This is, uh, we need a yearly resolution for the Moose Trail. It's a trail we've been sponsoring for many, many years for the, for the ATV club. And they just need an updated resolution in order to get their, um, funding, grant funding.
What, what they get is it's called Grant and Aid Trail. They get so much, so much per mile for maintenance fees for grooming and cleaning and, and cutting trees and stuff. So it's just a yearly resolution. I'll, uh.
No, no changes to it from previous years. It's just date changes.
Okay. Motion to approve White Lakes Resolution 2020 dash 018.
I'll make it.
Motion by Counsel Segler. Support.
I'll support.
Work by Counsel Pop. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland.
Yes.
Counsel Zins.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson. Yes. Thank you.
9E, we, we got an interesting letter here and it's in your box from Randall Furry. Says he wants to put a plaque out at, uh, the Stevens Chambers. But he, uh, wrote a check for a hundred dollars. I don't know how much the plaque is gonna be and he just wants it in honor of Steven Chambers. So, um, Kenny, are you still on?
Yes, I am. And, uh, in fact, while I've been sitting here, I'm, I'm reading through, uh, Barco Products catalog right now. That's where we buy our park benches, picnic tables, et cetera from. They offer that type of bronze plaque that would be good for outdoor use. Um, the, the problem I have is, uh, he, he donated a hundred dollars and in that price point, um, the size of plaque we're gonna get is roughly two inches by eight inches. So, and I'm also a little leery. I haven't had a ton of time to think about this or go out there and look, but um, I, I'd like to put it in a place where it possibly can get vandalized so that we're constantly, constantly replacing this plaque. So my thought was to put it up high, like in the gable of the building or something like that where kids can't get at it. However, it's gonna have to be bigger than for people to read it. Um, looking at something I think is gonna be big enough to be visible once it's up in the gable or up high is roughly, uh, seven by 12, for instance, and they're like $300. So, you know, I guess my question to you guys is, you know, how do you want to move forward with that? Uh, this was all just brought to my attention today. So.
Well, I, I would like to also table this for tonight and get a motion on that for Kenny to go and look. There might be already something out there. I don't know. I haven't looked.
Yeah, I, right now there's, there's signage, uh, you know, about the last time the renovation was done. It was a joint effort between the City of Hoyt Lakes, Minnesota Power, Lakehead, uh, Constructors, you know, et cetera. But, uh, you know, I, I, I guess I wasn't exactly familiar. I didn't, Becky, you know, pointed out the, the letter to me and the fact that this guy made a donation. But, you know, I, I guess I didn't know how to move forward with that.
Yeah, I, I think for tonight, I mean, you know, let's go on. Kenny, maybe you and I'll take a ride out there, look and see what's out there. Cause there might be something out there. Number one, it's not a city building. So I guess why do we have a right to put something on a building that we don't own?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem, you know, i- if the council was in fact, uh, approve something, providing the labor to attach a plaque. That's the least of my worries. It's just that I don't think we're gonna get much for a hundred bucks.
I'll make the motion that we table this.
All support.
Motion and, motion by Counsel Zin, support by Counsel Segler. My computer's acting funny, guys. Roll call.
Mayor of Reeland.
Yes.
Counsel Zin.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson. Yes.
Okay. And the last item is, uh, City of Hoyt Lakes Resolution 2020 019 Adoption of the St. Louis County All Hazardous Mitigation Plan. Becky?
Um, the city participated in the creating of that mitigation plan. And now FEMA is recommending all local jurisdictions that participated in that to adopt the county plan by resolution. Uh, they provided a template which is in front of you tonight and is asking for council approval of that. Um, and then I'll forward it to the county.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve the Resolution 2020 dash 019.
Motion by Counsel Peterson. Support.
All support.
Support by Counsel Segler. Roll call, please.
Mayor of Reeland.
Yes.
Counsel Zin.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson. Yes.
Anything else?
Adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Segler. Support.
I'll support.
Work by Counsel Peterson. Roll call.
Mayor of Reeland.
Yes.
Counsel Zin.
Yes.
Segler.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Peterson. Yes.
Thank you. Everybody, it was a very long meeting. Now switch over to the EDA Zoom meeting.
I'll end this meeting and it will be a new link.
All right. I might have a little bit of issues. I'll figure it out though.